Good evening, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, February 19th. We will begin at 6:30 PM. We will start with our roll call vote.
Commissioner Moschelli?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Azar?
Here.
Commissioner Brazen?
Here.
Commissioner Counselor Polica?
Here.
Vice Chair Shawalter?
Here.
Chair Foster?
Here.
And we did hear from Spark Tony that she was not able to make it this evening.
Motion to excuse Counselor Spark Tony.
Support.
Motion by Shawalter, support by Polica, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next on to approval of agenda. She's the only one missing, right?
Yeah.
Seven, eight, yeah. Agenda this evening has a public hearing for a special land use for 1401 Pharaoh and discussion idle item for mobile vending.
Move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's a motion by Polica and a second by Shawalter, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, next we have minutes from the meeting of January 15th.
Move to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion by Polica, a second by Azar, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'm just taking notes, all right. So next on our agenda, we have a call to audience, if anyone would like to speak on any items. We will have a public hearing later for 1401 Pharaoh, but if anyone would speak, like to speak to anything other than that agenda item, now is the time. Seeing none, we'll move on to our public hearing, where we have the consideration of a special land use application and site plan review for 1401 Pharaoh and industrial development. And we'll start with a presentation from our city staff. Roger.
Meeting Planning Commission, as Chair Foster introduced the item, this is a special land use and a site plan review for 1221 Pharaoh Street. Is it 1401? 1401 Pharaoh Street, there we go. You're familiar with this, there's been a couple of applications before you in the past, but the request is two expansions to the existing warehouse, one of which is 2,250 square feet and one which is 10,060 square feet. You can see on the map right here, this is their existing building in the light gray. And then they have another existing building here that I believe is not utilized right now, existing building three, and they're proposing two additions to connect it, so you have this space here, which is a smaller at 2,500 square feet, and this space here, which is about 10,000. The applicant does request a waiver for the prohibition of sheet metal as a building material per section 24-184. The expansion will bring the total size of the warehouse building to 52,000 square feet, so it's about 40,000 square feet now. The applicant did submit under the prior zoning ordinance, if you recall, the new zoning ordinance was adopted on December 16th by City Council, so the site plan was applied to the old code. The zoning district did change, I think originally it was M2, and now our nomenclature would be I1 Industrial. The Planning Commission's purview relates to the site plan review as final approving body, so that is approve or deny, and then the special land use will proceed on to City Council for their approve or denial. All of the specifications related to parking, EV spaces, bicycle parking, and landscaping is within the staff report, so I think most things it meets except for the metal siding. There are a couple of notes related to EV parking stations being installed if building three is utilized. And as part of the conditions, staff's recommendation for the special use review is related to one condition, the special land use is limited to only the handling and storing of chemical deemed hazardous by state or federal regulations, manufacturing, blending, refining, or using such chemicals is prohibited. And then there are four conditions related to the site plan. Final engineering and fire department details submitted with the building plans, the east elevation shall meet the fenestration requirement of 20% of the final plan, the site plan will receive fire review approval from the fire marshal, and a non-conforming photometric plan shall be included in the final plan. The applicant is here to answer any questions, I'm happy to answer anything, but I think it's pretty straightforward. That concludes staff's report, thank you.
Would the applicant like to add anything on this?
Good evening, Commission. My name is Wayne Dutton, I'm a project manager with the SIDOC group or the Architects and Engineers for the project. Again, as was mentioned, we've been here a couple of times in the past to continually develop this piece of property. We just recently completed the construction of what we were considering Phase One, and we were here for that approval back in 2023. In that time span, their organization found a need for additional square footage of just storing of the materials that they produce. So the 10,000 square foot addition is an extension of that interior storage that they currently had in Phase One. There will be two offices in there for a couple of employees, and then the smaller gray object on the site plan, the 2,000 roughly square foot addition, that will house a couple of staff restrooms, locker rooms, and a break room. Again, parking numbers have all been confirmed and comply, landscaping requirements comply. When it comes to the metal siding waiver, we do, I guess from our standpoint, it makes sense from a design standpoint just to have a very uniform look to this facility, so we're just going to carry on the same materials. I did bring a couple of images if you'd care to see them, what it looks like today.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are these all the same?
Yes.
So what we'd like to propose, even that we're getting closer to Pharaoh Street, is just kind of carry that same look, it's pretty simplistic, it's pretty low-key color scheme. And the conditions that were at the end of the report there, we will comply with all those, and I saw that one of them is that there's a need to add some glazing to that front facade 20%, and we have an opportunity to do that, we can create some glazing, given this type of facility, we probably wouldn't want them low where you can see all the product in the building, but we have an opportunity to implement some windows up higher, kind of dress up that facade and let some natural light into the building.
All right, well, I'm sure we'll have some questions for you, so you can stay close, but we do need to open the public hearing first before we get to any questions up for So with that, I will open the public hearing for the site, special land use. For 1401, thank you, Pharaoh Street. So if anyone would like to speak to the project, now would be the time for a public hearing. Sorry, we're opening at 6:40 PM. You may approach, thank you.
George Holton here on behalf of the owner of 1505 Bonner Street, the parcel to the immediate west of the subject parcel. The owner and I have discussed the proposed site plan and special land use permit. The concerns from ownership at this point relate to the two conditions, or I guess the five conditions, being required as part of the approval. Most importantly, that it be limited to the storage and not the refining, use, or blending of the materials, as well as the requirement that the fire marshal approve the plan and that site plans be provided to the fire department. I'm happy to answer any questions about the concerns at this time.
Okay, we can speak to those, so if you have anything else at this time, you're good?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to speak on 1401 Pharaoh Street for the special land use? Seeing no one approaching, I'll close the public hearing at 6:40. Oh, sorry, Roger, we also, I believe, had a letter or email, did you have any additional? I can read the one that I have on file.
Yeah, so the email is from Donald John O'Connell, he said that we own a building on 1530 Pharaoh Street and have some concerns regarding the attached notice. One, it appears that the buildings in sight have been completed, why are we only now receiving the notice? Number two, with the handling and storage of chemicals deemed to be hazardous, we are concerned about the decrease in property values of the surrounding properties. This is not the first time we have been affected by the hazardous materials issue, ITW building and 1300 East Nine Mile Road, and then he thanks us in the email.
Thank you, and Roger, you said you had no more, so now I'll close the public hearing at 6:42 PM. All right, so Roger, I may ask you a couple of questions first, and to George, one of your comments, the requirement, the fire department review, it will be a condition of approval that they do a review and that we receive approval from them before moving forward. And so Roger, can you speak to the condition of the special land use and why it's restricted to the limitation that you put on the suggested approval for us? And I can read that.
The special land use is limited only to handling and storing of chemical deemed hazardous by state or federal regulations, manufacturing, blending, refining, or using such chemicals is prohibited.
Thank you, yes, that.
I don't know, that might be one of two things, either the code in the use chart is specific to like a F1 group, or it may be that the applicant can answer, or maybe the applicant, the use allows it, but the applicant doesn't want to do that, and so something reminds me of the last time that maybe they clarified they didn't want to do manufacturing, blending, refining, or using chemicals, and so we restricted it. Is that correct, if you remember?
Correct, there's no.
I think the use was broad, and it came up last time at the 2023 meeting, or before that, and I think maybe the applicant clarified they won't be doing those things, and that's why I made the condition, if memory serves me.
All right, and so the previous special land use permits that were requested and approved for the site would be in addition, and this would not be overriding of separate special land uses, is that correct, or not?
I would say the special land use applied to the use in the buildings for 2023, and I think Kyle determined that since they wanted to expand the buildings, the special use needed to be, whatever it might be, amended or just re-agreed to. I don't know if I'd technically say it supersedes the other one, but effectively it expands the existing special land use is probably what I would say.
I'm just reviewing the special land use that was approved for 2023, and in the motion, it doesn't actually state the type of special land use, but it does limit, let me make sure this is the right one, yeah, does have the same limitations to the handling and storing of chemicals, and that manufacturing, blending, refining, or using such chemicals is prohibited. And so the way that it's written, and I believe this is the concern, but it is actually limiting them to only handling and storing and prohibiting the manufacturing, blending. And so George, was that clear when you said your statement, or does that clear up your concern?
That does.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Roger, for that. Additionally, we had a question about the buildings already complete, I have the feeling that that's probably because we did have addition in 2023, which we received approval then, we went forward with the building then, because then this is a new addition beyond that which has not been completed, correct?
Correct. And then going back to the last question, I think in the beginning of the staff process, per section 24-102, I think the use in the old code was solvent recovery centers and facilities handling, manufacturing, blending, refining, or using or storing chemicals deemed hazardous by state requires a special land use, right, all those things, but this applicant doesn't do the manufacturing, blending, refining, and that's why the condition excludes them
Does the city know of any present hazardous material issues that have been brought up that have been unresolved, you know, through Eagle, or?
No, the applicant could probably answer that, but in my conversation with the fire marshal, which we converse pretty frequently on a variety of more hazardous type uses in the city, I don't think this has been brought up, so I don't believe there's been any issues. They would have just received a CO for their prior expansion, so the fire marshal would have been in there inspecting and would have likely noticed something that they shouldn't be doing and would have corrected it and reported to CDV on that.
Okay, so I believe in the email, you know, stated that this is not the first time we've been affected by hazardous materials issue, I just wasn't sure if that's, there's no specification to what that issue might have been, so I wanted to make sure that there wasn't any understanding of, on the city side, that there was any unresolved issues with the hazardous materials.
I think that, we can ask the applicant if you have any more questions for me, but the applicant can answer whether there's been spills in the past and what are their remediation, how do they deal with it, what's the reporting requirements if something were to spill, they can probably go into detail on all that.
Through the chair, well, and the way that it was worded, I'm not sure if they were discussing this property or potentially another property saying that they've had issues with spillage, but maybe it's with a different address, with a different company.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Well, to that point, I'd like the applicant to answer the question, thank you.
So I guess to expound on that, so just to back up a little bit, in 2023, when we came through for our special land use, that's when we clarified architects and owners that the facility is truly for storage of their materials. Okay, sorry, it's purely for storage of their products, they don't do any of the blending or manufacturing on this site, this is kind of shipping and receiving. After it got our planning commission approval and city council approval, we went on to the process with the building department, and the phase that just got its certificate of occupancy today, you know, was thoroughly vetted through the building department and the fire marshal, and all the storage materials that are in this building were all vetted and can be stored there, and so on and so forth, so yes, this, today, we wrapped up the past project that's been completed and certified through the city, this is a brand new, yeah, a new phase to the building, I guess, to address the question in that email. And today, we're not, I guess to clear up that item about hazardous waste materials, we're not changing how the business operates at all, this is just an extension of what was already approved in the past, they're just going to have more square footage to store some more products. There haven't been any hazardous material spillages or anything on this site. As part of the permitting process for the phase that we just completed, all of the civil engineering, all that did go through Eagle for all their reviews and, you know, with the storm sewer and water main tap and all that kind of thing, so. So Eagle was involved in the first phase and reviewed all the civil drawings.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding the special land use? I have a question about the landscaping from the site plans that we had approved previously, and I will admit that I didn't make it out to the site prior to this meeting, so I've not been able to see what's been implemented from the previous plan, so if you could maybe just speak to, because I know that you're building over the area that was supposed to be planted trees and whatnot, can you maybe just speak to the plans from like 2023 until now in terms of landscaping?
Yeah, so you're correct, the previous project did not have the new 10,000 square foot addition in the gray, and in that area, on our previous plans, we had a series of trees planted in that area. But during construction of Phase One, in working with Kyle and the approvals, we explained, hey, we're not going to plant those trees there because in the very near future, we're going to be looking to get approval for this new 10,000 square foot addition. So those trees that were going to be where that footprint is of the new addition, those were planted by the general contractor in Phase One along that southern portion of the site you see there. There's what, two, four, six, eight trees there, so those in Phase One had already been ordered and purchased, so we did move those particular trees along that southern property line. The two trees that show on this plan in front of you that are to the east of our new 10,000 square foot addition, those will be new as part of this project. And all of the remaining landscaping from along Pharaoh, so north of our new addition there, that was all part of Phase One, and that's all been installed. The trees along Pharaoh, the, when you get in front of that parking lot that's towards the north there, there is a landscape bed between the fence and those trees, and all those shrubs were part of Phase One, and those have been installed. The two parking lot trees have yet to be installed, but we, as part of closing out Phase One, we indicated with the city that those will be planted, we just got too close to winter to get those in.
Okay.
So those will be planted.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on the landscaping? All right, and then Roger, you had mentioned EV parking in that it would be required should they be using the additional space?
Yeah, so on that portion of it, three spaces were installed with Phase One, and there will be six additional spaces installed if the owners ever occupy existing building number three. They'll be required to install an additional six.
Okay, I didn't see that as part of our motion, and so how do we want, if that's the agreement, then I think it should probably be part of the motion, so that the city has understanding on how to implement in the future.
I don't know why Kyle didn't include that. Site plan considerations, number one, building number three is an existing unoccupied office building, currently there are no plans to reoccupy that building, however, the applicant will install the necessary six electric vehicle charging stations if that building becomes reoccupied in the future.
Where are you reading that from, am I?
Page 11 of the staff report, bottom right corner.
11, thank you.
Right under site plan considerations above the table in that paragraph, so I think it probably should meet it as a condition under the site plan, that just says upon reoccupancy of building three, the applicant shall install six EV charging stations.
Six, thank you.
They're good. The applicant has concurred, they're good with that.
All right, anything, any other questions for applicant? Our discussion on materials, I know they're requesting a waiver.
Through the chair, I just want to tie something together, let me get to the right, oh, city review comments and SIDOC response notes, with, so there were city comments that went out on November 25th, and then there's red lines, and there's a note on, under building design and citing, on page two, industrial districts, they have a build to requirement, and there's a note, and so on, there's a note, we've added a note that states we're requesting approval of a waiver on these items, is that necessary and is that on the plans, is that a waiver we're looking at for?
Yeah, there were, there were two on our plans, we submitted the very front sheet, which is SP 001.
So the first one is metal and the second one is this build to waiver, the second one looked like it was about an overhead door, but I just want to make sure that they caught up with the notes that were given.
Yeah, so I guess, so the, our red marks on that letter were us responding to Kyle saying this is what we'll do to our plans, and then the red clouds on our plans are what kind of cover those notes, but you're correct, there's two waivers listed on our cover sheet that Kyle requested we put on the drawings, one being the metal siding and the second one being overhead door facing Pharaoh Street. Those painters, here's big font there.
Where's, you also mentioned the set two?
That's where it says requesting a waiver on the set two, so I just wanted a description of what we're trying to accommodate.
Well, I don't think the set two applies, we debated this because in the previous code, I think the number was 80, first off, it's a new code, but they have to be one or the other, we can't blend, but if we go look at the old code, I think it says like 80% has to be the set two.
Okay.
So if you look at the building where they're expanding, because we got this debate on previous ones, does that mean if they want to expand 100 square feet here, they need to build a building all the way down here? I think what we determined is any addition they do must meet that, so if you look at this linear footage, it probably means the 80% rule.
Okay.
So in other times, I think we've interpreted 80% was the whole thing, but it made sense in our last review of it to say any addition must meet that, and this clearly has more linear footage here, right, than this piece, so it means the 80%.
But it's not a, excuse me.
Oh.
That's kind of what we determined, and then with the new code, it completely came out.
Oh, okay.
So it rectifies it.
So what they responded with, will request waiver, it's not required because of the new code?
It's not required because the linear footage of the addition, which is this and this, is 80%. 80% is within the 15 feet or so.
80% of the addition, okay, so we're just looking at the front facade and 80% of that is at the build two.
Correct. Previously, when we looked at it, we thought it meant the whole, you know, property, and then as another layer of that, on the new code, it becomes mute anyways, so I think that's the determination on that. For the overhead door, waiver for use of an overhead door facing the public street, there's an existing concrete driven overhead door currently facing Pharaoh Street, maintain the street for use.
That might be also a change in the new code, I can't find the overhead door standards in the new code. I apologize, this is like our first or second site plan with our new zoning code here.
Well, it's, you're not installing a new overhead door, it's the existing overhead door.
There's an existing drive.
With no overhead door.
There's an overhead door, but on a small, we're going to remove a small warehouse out on the front of that property. Oh, don't say that.
That, that building, that small warehouse goes away to make room for our new addition. But since we have a driveway there, that driveway, we're just continuing to show on the site plan. That'll go to a new door on the new, the new addition. And Kyle mentioned that we would need a waiver for a door facing Pharaoh Street. He had us explain how we would use that. That is not going to be a primary entrance to the building whatsoever. Everything happens back in the truck wells. But from a design standpoint, since we already have a driveway, if it's approved, it's nice to have a overhead door for convenience. If you're dropping off an occasional. Not related to their business, but just another.
So it's existing there, but that building is being redeveloped. And so it is a new overhead in the same location.
Yep, that, yep, it'll lead to the new facade of our new addition.
In the new code, and again, we're applying the old code, the only mention of overhead is in the artisan maker space, which says garage slash overhead doors, garage and overhead doors may only face secondary frontages and exempt frontages. But this is only in the artisan maker space form based section. It doesn't really matter because we're applying the old code. I'd have to pull up the old code, which I don't have a PDF version of it on my computer. We'd have to pull it up in word search where the overhead was in there to see if it needs a waiver. I think if you, if the old code says you can't have it, they're grandfathered, right? But once they remove it, now they're complying. Now, when you do one, you need a waiver, but we are also going to the new code. So I mean, the planning commission, we can try to search where that section is. Or if you want to make a finding of a waiver, we can as well.
Can we even look at the old code for guidance anymore? Because it's no longer that.
This was submitted under the old.
It was submitted under the old code.
But we're, no, but it's resubmitted under the new code. This is a new application under the new code, which affects this building.
They submitted it.
Oh, gotcha.
Prior to, when did you submit your application?
November 21st.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I wasn't following that.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're, we are reviewing this under the old code.
Yes, and I had the conversation with the city attorney. And in one aspect, he said, we'll make them do the new code. And I said, we have a number of people who've submitted and we've reviewed it. And I don't want to then tell them to go back to the drawing board. So we agreed anybody who submitted an application before December 16th would be under the old code. Anybody after is in the new code.
Okay, well.
Question is, is do you need the specific section to give the waiver?
Yeah, we do.
And if so, I don't know where I'm going to find it.
I mean, it, our old code is still on munich code.
Oh, that's right. We have not appealed to it yet.
Through the chair, would that be another motion we would need to make?
Depends on the part of the code. Typically, I think a waiver of a standard like that is just typically a condition. A parking waiver is typically separate, but that's usually the only one that is.
I'm word searching right now.
Pardon me, I just, I'm looking at sheet, none of this matters, I'm not going to like make a big deal out of it. I just want to make sure that we're clear on this. On SP 101, it specifically calls out the 15-foot front yard setback. And you can see that all the buildings on the site, except for the firehouse or the fire pump house, are well behind the 15-foot setback, which is a requirement of 80% of the facade be up at that, that level. So I do want to be clear to everybody up here that we're basically omitting them from that requirement completely. There's not, there's zero, except for the fire pump house, is, is at that, what was required to be the 80% at the 15-foot setback. So that's one thing. And then, this is a different comment for me. Was this photograph, was, did the Google car come by when, when you guys were occupying this? Because that, that door looks very well used and it's open at this time. It just happened to be open when the Google car drove by. And I drove by today and it was all well plowed out, you know, like being used. So like saying that it's a maintenance interest. The new building.
Yeah.
Okay, I can appreciate that. Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
But under the old building it is because that's the only entrance?
Yeah, that's the only entrance to that old building, but it won't be a primary.
Just to bring up the overhead door discussion again, in the old architectural designs guidelines, in, it was the 24184, it said, overhead loading doors, overhead loading doors shall not face a public street or residential district. The planning commission can waive this requirement upon a determination that there's no reasonable alternative and is essential to the operation of the business. And the visual impact will be moderated through use of building materials, architectural features, or landscaping. This provision is not intended to regulate retail customer access. However, overhead vehicular access doors facing a public street are discouraged.
So we can waive the requirement for the old code?
Yes, we can.
What is the, what is the setback for the new building?
Say that again.
It's like about 30 feet.
At least 30.
So what, so it says that we can waive the requirement of the building, but it has some stipulations on how, the reasoning behind why we can waive the, the reasoning.
Overhead door.
The overhead door. So it says that it has to be, there's no reasonable alternatives and is essential, is essential to the operation of the business and will be moderated through the use of building materials. Is that overhead door essential to the operation of your business?
I would say in our circumstance, it was, if, if it were approved, it'd be convenient to have it there. It's, it's not essential to our operations. Honestly, we have an existing drive there and we thought, well, if the existing is drive there, it would be convenient to have another door just for an occasional access. But it's not essential to the operations inside the building.
Through the chair, can you, Commissioner Scholter, can you read the last part of that though?
Yes. So it was, so it says that upon a determination that there's no reasonable alternative, it is essential to the operation of the business and the visual impact will be moderated through the use of building materials, architectural features, or landscaping. This is not intended to, to regulate retail access though.
Yeah, but there was something about could be at the discretion of, there's a part where it just says the, it's at the discretion of the commission. I thought you said something to that effect.
It says the planning commission can waive this requirement upon the determination. So we can waive the requirement to not have.
Okay, on the determination. I thought you said that at the discretion, at their discretion.
It says it's discouraged to be facing a public street.
I think what the applicant meant to say was it is essential to operations. It, it, I understand it's the old code, we don't want to mix them up. But if you don't feel it meets that, then they'll get approved. But then they would probably request administrative review of it and under the new code it would be waived, so.
Well, which one are we reviewing this on, the new or the old code? Do we have to pick one? We can't, we can't pick and cherry pick rules from one code and another.
Correct.
We have to, we have to determine.
I'm, I'm saying pick the old one. They get their approval, but the new code allows the CD director great administrative review when it doesn't change the operations of the building. So likely after they submit their building permit, they would submit an amendment and we would say it's okay because under the new code it's allowed. So it's a tough one, we're in a tough, it's, we're in a weird spot of an old and new.
Proceedurally, it sounds like we don't, we don't do the waiver. And then through them appealing, it'll apply to the new zoning ordinance.
Well, we could, if we approve the site plan without, with saying that you can't have the door because we can't provide the waiver, they get the site plan review, but then during, they would have an administrative change within the process, yes. So they wouldn't have to come back to us, it's just that final site plan.
Yeah, at some point.
Would have the.
At some point, the new code would apply to them. Say it was five years from now and they wrote in and said, hey, we'd like to do something here. We look at the new code and say, yes, you can have a door. You know what I'm saying? So I understand they're on the, under the old code and approving this. But at some point, when they want to change, is we look at it under the new code.
Yeah, I would think that we are reviewing this application and the city council will be reviewing the site plan application under the old ordinance, because that's when the applications were submitted. But once we go through our approval process and then it gets to the city and you're going through the rest of the process, then you'd be under the new zoning code.
At some point, we would have to apply the new code. We wouldn't hold them to the old code 20 years from now.
Are there any?
But you just said, just, you said when it goes to city council for the site plan.
For the special land use.
Yeah.
Are there, are there anything, is there any stipulation in this? Is, is, does the building meet the new ordinance?
Yeah, my bigger issue is actually the primary frontage. Because if we're on the old code, then the problem is with the, the new portion of the building and its setback. I don't think we would necessarily have to do to 80% because it's an existing building and it's an existing footprint. But the, the building addition would have to go to the 0 to 15-foot setback under our old code.
Yeah, and I, this may make the conversation easier, but if we're perfectly happy with having it reviewed under the, the old zoning ordinance, that truly is, it'd be a nicety to have that. If it's a, if you were to say today, no, we don't want that on for the, we're fine with removing the door from the project. It's not essential to functioning in the building. It would be nice to have for an occasional means if we need it. But again, if you were to decide under the current zoning that we're under for this project, that it doesn't comply, we, we would remove it from the project.
Okay, I appreciate that. And that, but that one's a little bit easier than the, the setback from Pharaoh Street.
Under the, under the old one.
Correct.
Which was?
So I can't, we don't, I don't have a.
15 feet under the old one. Go ahead.
There's not a requirement under the new one.
So under the old code, which we're reviewing this under, you have to have a 15-foot setback from Pharaoh at a maximum. I don't see a number here. We don't have a setback, but it appears to be more than 15 feet.
It is, yeah. And if I could add to that, that's money, budget driven as well.
I'm saying we, we can't waive that though. Like that, that's an actual issue for us.
Okay, so we, so I guess what you're saying in under the new, is it, are you saying you have to build up to 15?
Yes.
We don't, I guess, put it this way too, we don't have the budget to add that much square footage to the building.
We don't have, we don't have the legal ability to waive that, so.
That's still square footage, it just add up if you add another 10.
You're saying you can't, we also are saying we cannot actually legally.
If you, under, under the old code.
Yeah, under the old code.
Tonight, we cannot, yeah.
Theoretically.
Technically, can't they just request us to do it under the new code at this point?
That's a legal question.
I mean, just because they filed it before the new code was implemented, there's no reason at this point that they're now requesting.
Well, Roger said that he talked with Dan Crest, so.
Well, let me add, let me. It's probably 30, that's your 15. Yeah, that's your 15 setback, so it looks like it's, that's, or that's.
They're off doing it under the new code. I thought we were doing it under the new code.
I'd have to get that measurement for you. It's more than a 15 though.
We'd have to get the measurement on that.
Well, I think what we could do this evening is to say that we can approve the site plan contingent on a build two under the old zoning ordinance. But we can leave it up for interpretation from our city attorney to, as to whether or not our approval this evening could be under the new ordinance and to allow for it. Or after the fact of going through the site plan approval from the planning commission that during, or after the approval, there's always changes to site plans that then have to be approved by city, that that can be an amendment at that time. So we can go through the process this evening. We would have to note that as we are, we were told to be looking at the old code. We don't, we don't have the ability to waive that, so we would just have to approve it by that. And then we would allow the city to work with their attorney and through the staff approval process, you might be able to amend that. The other option would be to potentially table tonight and then have to submit under the new code or come back into, that we're reviewing the new code. So there's, you know, there's options. I'm just saying that we're limited in those options tonight.
So let me, let me look up one thing, hold on. Under the new code site plan, there are, an approved site plan may be subsequently modified subject to the review and approval requirements of this article based on the scope of the proposed modifications. The CED director may approve minor plan modifications under administrative review. Minor modifications are movement of a structure, provided all setback parking, landscaping, and other site requirements are met. So under the new code, that would be an administrative change. Plantings in the landscaping area may be replaced by similar types. Improvements set in, to site plan access such as deceleration lanes, changes of building material, design fencing, screening, changes in interior floor plan, slight modification of sign movements, changes required or requested by the city county or state or federal agency, situations the CED director deemed similar. So I agree with Chair Foster, if you move forward under the old code, we can work with Dan Crest to see if the administrative change would be allowed subsequent to planning commission. Or if he says no, we can come back under the new code and present it.
And if it was to be submitted, if you submitted a new application, I assume that you wouldn't have to draw new drawings, but potentially do an application fee. But then it would not actually have to come back to us, it could be reviewed by staff, is that what you just?
No, because.
I didn't.
Because we didn't approve it under the new.
I'm saying if they, I'm saying if they re-submit them, if they needed to, in terms of process.
No, I think it has to come back because the special use review triggers a site plan being submitted.
Well, if we approve the special land use.
I don't know, that's another question. Kyle has in, Kyle has in there that all special.
Well, I'm sure that we can come to an agreement that will work for all of us, that at, at some point, you'll be able to amend the, the site plan that is approved this evening.
Yeah, there's only one other application, I think, that is under the old, which is the proposed car wash. So these are good things to think about as that one comes forward. I think we only have two that are in both, have a foot each side.
It'll be good to have a, yeah, more thorough conversation, I think, with Dan Crest about that then.
Okay, but I want to make sure that everyone's clear. Based on the new code, everything that's been presented would be approved. Should, could be approved.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Will be, could be approved.
I don't think there's any, there's no minimum height anymore, like a second story, there's no setback.
No setback restriction.
It does, metal siding. Section 2.1.2 I1 and I2 industrial standards, front yard setback is 15, maximum setback of 15 feet. But then it says for sites undergoing expansion, the minimum, maximum front yard setback may be set to match existing buildings on site.
That is doing, it's matching the existing building that's on site.
Yeah, and so it sounds like that is, and that, and we don't, I, I have never dug into the setbacks enough. We don't, there's no provision similar to that on this, on the existing, okay.
Vice Chair Scholter, are you pointing to the table or in the form based or where, where were you saying that?
In the new code, section 212.
212.
So there would not be an issue with the building siding.
For sites undergoing expansion, the maximum front yard setback may be set to match the existing buildings. I'd have to take a look at it, but I think it would probably be okay.
Yeah, looks like it.
So through the chair, I, I guess I still don't understand why applicant can't choose tonight.
They can.
Okay.
If they want to.
Because the plans were submitted on January 2nd, which is after the new code was approved.
Sure, probably updated plans.
Updated plans, the application is the.
They were already half under process of the old one. So I don't know if Kyle told them, hey, you can submit under the new one, just wait. I don't know what the conversations were, but. but, you know, I get handled this under the old code, talked to Dan Chris, he said just process it under the new, the old code. But if the applicant wanted to, just pull it away and come back, sure, they, there's no. The only problem would be if they got denied, because then there's a year timeout, but I think that also says unless there's like major changes, which the code would have been a major change. You know, there's the requirement that you can't submit back to back, but if they wanted to, they could. They probably, I'm just going to assume probably weren't told of the new code, or will you explain that?
So there's no conversation about.
There probably wasn't much.
What you were submitting under. But the site plan application was submitted on November 14th, 2024, per our packet. All right, so since that was the advice that you were given by our attorney prior to this evening, we will move under the assumption that we're reviewing under the old code, applicant does have the ability to submit an application or to work with the city attorney under, to see if there's a different interpretation.
If approved, we'll work with them prior to city council, the city attorney, to find out if we can make these pieces work, and if for some reason they can't, then we'll just process it under the new code.
Okay. So for the applicant, would you like us to move forward with, as we stated, that we would have to remove the overhead door under the old code provisions, that the commission was not providing a waiver at this time, and that the building would have to be moved to a 15 foot setback from Pharaoh Street. Would you like to move forward with a site plan approval with those conditions? That can be amended in the future, potentially?
Yes.
The other option would be to table and then you could, you know, make a decision otherwise.
I will go with your first, first explanation.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
There's a caveat in here that they're not meeting the building material requirements, and I'm new here, so I don't want to like, I want to get some advice from you guys or maybe hear some of your explanations first, but I don't want to get into a position where we're just approving prohibited materials without a reason, without a reason, because then, you know, then what's the point of having it? Everybody can just do pole, pole buildings. So, so I do have an issue with that, but I'm not sure exactly, you know, where my complaint would lie. Like, I don't want to force, obviously, every building in this neighborhood is already of this stature, of this nature. They, actually, the office building that they're not using right now is the nicest building in 500 yards. So, so with that, I would just like to ask, you know, what are, what options might there be to do a different material, something that is on the approved list, or why we've given these exceptions in the past?
Thank you. And it was noted in the city planners' letter to the applicant, and so maybe you can just speak to it and your conversations that you've had with the city.
Yeah, we, again, we understand we're seeking a waiver for the materials on the front facade or the facade on Pharaoh now. Our, I guess, our explanation's pretty straightforward in that making the whole building look uniform. It's a large, you know, shipping and receiving building with clean metal siding, and we were just keeping that theme going. Not to say if, if, if it's, if it, if we don't seek that waiver, of course, we would, we would do what we need to do to get approval for that facade. No, and we would, we would agree to, you know, having to adjust that if, if the waiver wasn't.
Approved. Through the chair, the intentions are to use the same materials that you were approved of in 2023.
Correct.
Okay.
And I am not an architect, and we have these conversations quite frequently, so I should probably be more knowledgeable, but could someone please explain? So you have a primary material, prefinished metal siding, and I would just note that I know that we're reviewing under the old ordinance, but of course, we're, we've, we've updated our ordinance, and particularly, we've had some changes to our building standards, and our new ordinance allows for architectural metal panel that is either insulated or composite. Are there differences there, and can someone explain them to me?
Trying to figure.
I, I can just state, like, an IMP, an insulated metal panel, it would have a, usually have a higher gauge sheet metal outside layer, which would be less susceptible to damage. I'm not saying that it wouldn't still sustain damage. It would last a little longer. An ACP, like a composite panel, same, same again, you know, it has a little more rigidity to it than just, just, you know, what we're looking at right now, which is basically like a corrugated metal panel. They just have a nicer look to them generally. You'll see, you know, larger areas of smoothness. Some of them have different corrugation patterns in them that just kind of give them a nicer look. And I think that's why it's been differentiated in our code, to not just have the standard corrugated metal and to allow, so, you know, the IMPs.
Thank you. And so what you're proposing, this is not a new building, but does the newer sections match this that we're seeing here on the screen?
Yeah, if you have those couple eight and a half by elevens there.
Oh, wow, thank you, yeah.
It is, it's, I guess it's a similar pattern to what you see in that Google image there, but it's just the newer, it's a lighter colored.
Through the chair, they're just, they're matching existing.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And a lot of the, a lot of time when we look at whether or not it's an appropriate material and looking to possibly bend the material standards, a lot, we just look at a lot of the existing, a lot of the existing area and seeing whether or not a metal panel will be compatible with the architectural feeling of the area. And because it's writing, it's, you can never get that granular when you're writing just overall guidelines. And so we had to, yeah, I'm asking for the waiver. They're, they're asking, can we, do you feel that architecture, do you feel that a exposed fastener rain screen system will be, I guess, in, in line with what the existing, in what, with what the surrounding buildings have, and would look architecturally compatible?
Through the chair, could the, could the applicant explain the type of panel that's being used? Is it a exposed fastener?
In the photos there, no, the fasteners are.
Concealed?
Yeah.
Okay.
A fully insulated wall with, you know, bagged warehouse type insulation on the interior, that, you know, when you're inside a warehouses, it's that white, you know, plastic covered type insulation.
Yep. Yeah, and I'll speak from, Matt and I, as we worked on this section of the zoning ordinance, it was really looking at, for the new materials, was making sure that the fasteners were concealed as, as part of that, and what the applicant is illustrating is that it is.
And looking at something that will age well, too, because a lot of times metal panels don't age particularly well, especially if they have direct contact with the ground. And so I, whenever my architectural, whenever metal panels, I generally, just in, in my practice, I generally never, in my experience rather, I never let the metal panels touch the ground. I'd always hold them up off the ground and have a CMU base or something to protect it from driveways to get oversalted and stuff like that that would corrode at the metal panel.
Also shown.
But I also, was, when I was looking at this, the, the building plan here, most, it doesn't look like there's pavement that is surrounding it. It doesn't look like there's pavement that will be subject to, to being oversalted for the most part. But overall, I would like it if there were a few starter courses, but.
Commissioner Newman, we have proposed language for our motion in the finding that we waive the prohibition of sheet metal as a building material. Would you like to add reasoning to that, I think for your comment? You know, that obviously will be noted in that we've had this conversation, but would you like?
I would like it stated that it's in line with the existing materials and that it fits the adjacent buildings in the neighborhood, because it is identical to the entire facility, if that's still what that is, and the existing building, so.
All right, any other questions for applicants or discussion?
Through the chair. So I notice on the existing warehouse, there's a number of windows on the east, east end, but there are no intentions on the facade that you presented that you're going to do any windows on the, on the east end.
Yeah, we, we will add windows for that consideration at the end of the, the report, Kyle's report, that says that we'll want to meet the 20% requirement, and we have no issue doing that. The current facade, where you do see those windows in the background, that's because today that warehouse has two floors of offices right there, so those are office windows. But, but when we expand new warehouse, all of those offices disappear and it just becomes 100% warehouse. But we, we don't take issue with adding some glazing to the Pharaoh Street facade.
Okay. I somehow missed the condition two.
Okay.
So thank you for pointing that out.
Sure.
All right. All right. Well, we discussed waiver of the building material that's required and the addition of conditions that were noted in the packet, as well as installation of six EV charging stations if building number three does become reoccupied in the future, that we were not providing a waiver of the overhead doors, therefore removal of the overhead door from the east facade, and reduction of the east setback from Pharaoh Street to 15 feet per section 24-103 of the old code. Any further discussion or questions?
You clarify that last point there. So the condition for the overhead door will be removed, and then the condition for building three is occupied.
And then the last, on my count, would be number seven, reduction of the east setback from Pharaoh Street to 15 feet per section 24-103.
Is the applicant agreeing to that?
That was the discussion of that we'd, that the, as we're reviewing under the old code, the building as cited on the site plans does not meet our bill to, and sorry, I probably need to reword that, as the primary frontage bill to, rather than a setback. Well, I guess it's the same thing, but we've been talking about it as the bill to. Anyone would like to make a motion? We can start with the special land use, which will go to city council for approval. We are recommending body for the site special land use.
I would make a motion, just a question first. That is not one where we're adding conditions. Everything else was on the site plan.
Correct. There is a condition, though, on the special land use as provided in the packet.
The one there. Okay, so I, I move for the special land use application in the matter of 1401 Pharaoh Sidwell number listed, I'll read it, 2535105007. After a public hearing was held as set for this date in place, the planning commission recommends to the city council approval of the special land use based on plans dated January 2, 2025, with the following findings, one through five listed in the packet, and condition one, that the special land use is limited to only, the handling and storing of chemicals seemed hazardous by state or federal, federal regulations. Manufacturing, blending, refining, refining or using such chemicals is prohibited.
Or.
As a motion by Azar, support by Moselli, I believe, yes. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Now for the site plan. I'm happy to help if anyone needs it.
I will, I will make this motion since the secretary, excuse me, trying to document this. I move that in the matter of 1401 Pharaoh Sidwell number 2535105007, the planning commission approved the site plan based on the plans dated January 2, 2025, with the following findings and subject to the following conditions. Findings one through three, as in the documents submitted by staff, with an amendment to finding number four to include, the planning commission waived the prohibition of the sheet metal as a building material per section 24184D9, because the proposed material is intended to match the existing building materials and materials of adjacent structures. Conditions one through four, as supplied by staff, with the following additional conditions. The proposed new overhead door facing Pharaoh that will make use of the existing drive off Pharaoh, but will be removed from the design per recommendation of the commission. Condition six, the applicant proposes to keep the same access and circulation. Building number three is an existing unoccupied office building. Currently, there are no plans to reoccupy that building. However, the applicant will install the necessary six electric vehicle charging stations if that building does become reoccupied in the future. And condition number seven, noting that the building as cited does not meet the bill to line of 15 feet max from the building frontage property line. Are there clarifications to that?
I need a second first. Anyone want a second to the motion?
Support.
So I would make a amendment to number seven, the condition number seven, that not just noting that it doesn't meet it, but that they must meet it per section 24-103.
Is it meet per, could you repeat that section?
24-103.
4-103.
So you could word it, you know, reduction of the east setback from Pharaoh Street to 15 feet per section dash 24103, or just amend your language, how that they must meet section 24-103. This is per our approval, and so.
So even though that we're kind of tacitly approving this, or did not, I'm not approving, even though we're reviewing this as if it's kind of the new code?
We can only approve under the old code, and so per the code, that it must meet the code, and so they would have to, under the old code, reduce the setback to 15 feet per that section. And so noting that it's per the section and that they'll deal with staff and our attorney to resolve it.
Okay.
Beyond our means. I don't think that we have to note that, though.
So building as cited does not meet the bill to line of 15 foot max from the building frontage property line and must meet section 24103, per the zoning ordinance that was approved at the time of submission.
Perfect. And, sorry, who's supported?
Newman.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you?
Yes, I support the amendment as stated.
As Michelle wrote it, I'm assuming that you also support the amendment. All right, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll have a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for bearing with us as we work that out and thank you for coming to us. All right. Next on our agenda, we have a discussion item on mobile vending.
Michael's loading it.
Do you, I can send you the link? Or the link is in probably the email I sent you.
Yeah, but I can't get my emails from here.
What would be the best way to?
That would be great.
No, he sent me a link of something.
That's what we did, so we should already know.
Did it make the staff report?
With us.
It made the staff report, didn't it?
Rachel sent it. I could forward it to you. Oh, you don't have your email.
He sent it via email, though.
There's not a link in this.
I don't think it's.
No. Rachel's, sorry.
Nope. Do, do, do. He sent it.
I sent it, yeah.
It's my email stack, you know, so that's like.
Oh, my gosh. Exactly. I'm like, I just need to delete them all and start over.
Commissioner Moschelli is going to take it from here?
Yeah, should I come down there or should?
No, you can speak from here.
You can speak, I can just wave or something.
So.
Oh.
Do you want to go to the next slide here? So the planning commission has been discussing or doing research on mobile vending section and we want it, we pulled it out of the zoning ordinance to discuss further and help to develop this section. One of the things that we wanted to point out that this is not addressing is that it's not addressing outdoor seating and sidewalk stays. It's not addressing the mobile vending on public property policies and it's not addressing the mobile vending during special events policies. Do you want to go to the next slide? What it is specifically addressing is the mobile vending and food trucks on private property and site plan related concerns that typically fall within the planning commission purview. So as a number of planning commissioners went throughout the city and observed different uses of private use of food trucks, there was, there was at least some concerns that came to our, came to mind initially and part of this discussion tonight is to publicly talk about those concerns and plan for a, another opportunity for private owners and food trucks to be able to also contribute to the discussion. So this is sort of a discussion amongst all of us publicly to sort of air out all the different considerations for this particular part of the ordinance. And so to highlight some of the concerns that we initially had was that making sure that food truck employees have access to restrooms during operating hours, that to discuss the long-term usage of private property and what standards should be applied for those locations for certain durations of use of the property. If patron seating is included as part of the mobile vending on the private property, what, what rules should apply to that, especially related to restrooms and sanitation for, for patrons? And then overall discuss the full year usage of a site and if that is something that we want to have as something that somebody could apply for. Go to the next slide. So part of what we want to discuss additionally is maybe how is waste handled? Is that something that we should discuss as part of the planning commission and the zoning ordinance? Could a property owner have an approved site plan for transient food trucks that may be interchanged, sort of maybe it's like the Detroit fleet model potentially? Could a food truck be on the street adjacent to private, private property supporting that business? Is there, is there some sort of blending or support of a public-private type of approach? Go to the next slide. So what are some potential resolutions? Is that, you know, we create a tiered usage permit that ranges from short-term use to long-term use and we've, I've provided a few different varieties of options here for discussion. And then ultimately, because we're a planning commission and we're reviewing site plans typically, our, to understand what is the site plan process for such a use and in what cases does it require a site plan review? We'll go to the next slide. So our, our goal is here to get feedback from food truck owners at our, at our next potential meeting, either it's whether it's the next planning commission or a special meeting and have feedback from them on the different regulation, as long as the understanding is that our goal is to provide and protect the public health, safety and welfare without creating undue burden on businesses that we want to support. We want to support, a lot of these are minority owned or different types of owners that we want to support growth in the community. So we'll use today's session to sort of prepare sort of the questions and thoughts and discussions on, on this section of the ordinance. Next slide here. So the, the first two that we're going to look at are whether we have a one day and a four day permit or whether it's a two to seven day permit. And so this is, this typically falls with under the Oakland County Health Department for a part of it. There's specific guidelines that I've linked in this, in this that it's also tied to our typical food truck ordinance on what, what they have to meet. But they're, these meet the Oakland County Health Department's definition for special transitory food units as well as mobile units or temporary food. That's, those are all the different types of mobile vending that would apply for these, these one day permits or up to a week long permit.
We might have to work on the acronyms a little bit.
Some of these, well, these, this is straight from Oakland County Health Department.
Does it come from them? Okay.
But maybe they do have some humor at Oakland County. So some of the thoughts from here are now, how do we handle a sort of a long-term use? Some of the questions as we get to this that will probably come up is like the maintaining of property over a period of time. I know that's probably something that we're looking at. How is a property, property kept up during that period? When does a mobile vendor leave? That sort of thing. So the first long-term permit that we suggest is seasonal patio season permit.
I think you need to go to the next screen.
Yep. And then the other one that we'll talk about is the annual.
Do you want to go to the next one?
Yep, go ahead. So this is, this is sort of more detailed on all those different permits that I talked through, but the one day vendor permit would, would have a valid Oakland County Health Department license for non-fixed food operations and it would follow all those standard protocols from Oakland County, which requires the overhead ventilation and fire suppression hood approved by the Ferndale Fire Department, which is also per the Oakland County Health Department. And then a documented employee restroom access plan, which is also listed in the Oakland County Health Department manual. The four day or week long type permit has to abide by the same type of Oakland County Health Department standards. And then the only questions that initially I heard from, from some of us was whether, you know, how long is this permit? And if it does become a week long permit, is it renewable and how many times is it renewed? And so that's sort of some consideration for us. And, you know, maybe it's a certain period up to maybe six weeks and then after that you would tell them that, you know, they should apply for the seasonal permit or something like that. So then going on to the patio season permit, this would sort of align with our patio season in Ferndale with March 15th through November 15th, meets all the documented Oakland County bullet points there. And then with this would come a site plan review so that planning commission would review the egress of parking. Usually these are taken at parking spaces or something of that nature. So we, we would review what parking we are waiving. We would also look at adjacent neighbor impact. We would want to see that an employee restroom plan is identified, whether they're on a property that's got another business and that the food truck has access to that restroom during all hours of operation. If outdoor seating is provided, that the, the site plan identifies any site improvements as well as patron access to restrooms and hand sanitization. And then whether or not we have some on-street adjacent variances with the city planning commission approval. So there are a few instances of different businesses that really have no available site that do bring in food trucks regularly. And later on, you'll see I've documented the different types of locations throughout the city that have used food trucks if we want to bring that up and look at them specifically. Going on to the next one. The annual vendor permit, this is one where it's essentially a full year long permit and this would also require a site plan review, meet all the Oakland County standards, identify the restroom, identify if there's outdoor seating improvements and that they also have access to restrooms enhanced sanitization, same adjacent street conversation. And then also with this one, if it's an annual permit, how many times can it get renewed before maybe we look at, you know, if it's a, if it's for a period of three years, beyond that, does it become an accessory structure on a property? And then if it does become an accessory structure, what, what do we require for such an accessory structure or something like that? So that's sort of the initial thoughts kernels there. You want to go on to the next one? So these are, these will just roll through the different locations where we currently have food trucks throughout the city as well as establishments that regularly bring food trucks on here. 600 Woodward Heights has basically a vendor that's been an annual usage for over 10 years now. Next slide, 2701 Hilton, this, this is a vendor that's been on site for about a year. 771 East Eight Mile Road, this has a vendor that's been on site for about a year. 22500 Woodward, vendor that's been on site about a year. 2615 Woolcott, this has had various vendors on site over the last year or so. 600 West Nine Mile Road, this has had various trucks on site over a year. 1511 Jarvis Street, this one brings food trucks that are adjacent to the property and utilize the, the street. 141 West Nine Mile Road, this one has got a food truck that has been permanently on property for about nine months to a year. So those are the various properties throughout Ferndale that we see utilizing this, but obviously it does, you know, there's other people that may be utilizing this. So I guess I'll open it up to the rest of the planning commission for discussion topics and thinking forward to what we would want to ask potential property owners or vendors for clarification.
Can I just recap it? Part of it, some of it. So as Commissioner Moschelli said, this was, came from the code. I think Commissioners Subakatani and Council Polica and I went on a tour when we broke the different sections of the code up and you two came up with some recommendations. And then as we wrote the code, wanted to spend more time talking about it, but obviously need to get the code adopted. So we pulled that back and we reserved that section. The observations, a couple of things, this probably would codify a little bit as was said, that public property, so streets and parks and everything would still be approved by Michael and those are usually always temporary, right, for a special event or some, some short term. This is really related to private. I think the consistent theme in these trucks, there's one consistent theme, it seems, and most are going from temporary to permanent, right? They start with an intent to be temporary and then it becomes a permanent kind of structure. And then with that is, you know, if it was a real permanent structure, you have to have fire code and bathrooms and parking and these are kind of circumventing that. Minus that consistency, I'd probably say they're all very different. Some are in extremely tight spaces, like the Eight Mile Gas Station one. I don't, you highlighted that one, did you?
I did not actually, so.
It's gone as of recent. I don't know if it's gone permanently or temporarily. The taco truck at Mobile is, or Taco Wagon is gone, but they come back sometimes. So some of these are in like really tight, you know, all of our gas stations are relatively very small and tight and the owner can make a little bit extra rent. So they just put them on a corner and with that comes, and then the mobile at Hilton, with that comes, you know, proximate to residential, I mean 15 feet away. You know, they have their issues. There's one on Nine Mile that has set up and kind of blasts music and I think the police have received complaints from the neighboring home. They didn't sign up for that. If they were a permanent building, they'd be, if they're blasting music, it'd be inside the building, you wouldn't really hear it. You take the one on, other one on Eight Mile, they become a really permanent structure with, with, with some flower pots and chairs and tables. And some of us were on the tour, which came up at the wrong time as we pulled up. The person had to use the bathroom but kind of went outside. You don't think about that. We didn't think about that kind of stuff. You know, if you're working at a food truck and you have an eight hour shift, if you're maybe, let's say, the nacho truck, they might be able to go into the Foodland? Foodland? Ferndale Foods, old school. You can go into Ferndale Foods and probably use the bathroom, but the one near the kitchen cabinet place, I don't know if they can during the day, but this was obviously closed. So that person had no choice but to go in the parking lot. So as we dig deeper into it, you know, there are real issues with them. I think one of the things when we look through the lens, the four lenses council adopted, one of them was equity and I do note that almost all of these are minority owned. So, you know, it's perfect for what we want. We want to nurture that, but at the same time, there are issues with traffic, conflicts with traffic, noise, bathroom facilities. So that's why we're digging deep into this. I think every city does something different that allows them. I think the conversation here is to talk amongst the group and see, do we want to regulate them? And one of the ideas also was to bring in the food truck owners. So I think me and maybe Chair Foster talked a couple of weeks ago about, you know, if we have the people come in, they're going to be very specific to exactly what they want. You know, these should only be a lot of gas stations because I'm at a gas station. So we have to find a way that we can engage them. So we have to find a way that we can engage them without making it about just them, but the issues. I think we talked about maybe putting out a survey community wide to see what people said. So I think there's a couple of conversations, you know, do we want to regulate? Do we like the different types of permits? The longer you're there, the more you have to do. You're becoming permanent. And then do we want to engage the food truck owners? And then ideas for how would we engage them or the community on this topic? So with that said, I'll turn it over.
My first question is, are the food trucks operating currently would, if they were permanent in the on the sites that they're on, would they be allowed by code? Are there any of them that are in an area that wouldn't allow a permanent food vendor? So I know gas stations, you can usually get like a, you know, like a PETA shop in there or something like that. So I mean, that must be allowed. And I think the orchid, obviously, the one on the screen still, that's in it's in the restaurant district. Is there anything that that wouldn't be allowed, like the furniture parking, furniture parking lot? If it was, if it was a restaurant, it would be allowed, right? So.
Yeah. The orchid one is different. I think that's not open to the public. That's only patrons inside and they're contained to the patio. So that one's a little bit different.
Yeah, the code doesn't really say you can't have a mobile vending truck in any location. I would, I would encourage that we if we do a code in that manner, that it could be allowed anywhere except residential. Because I don't think we want, you know, mobile vending vehicles, you know, on, you know, Breckenridge or.
Maybe only allowed for a one day permit for a party or something like that, right?
Yeah, special use, yeah.
They're usually not going on private. I mean, if it was a private event, they're going to pull in their driveway.
Like I think what you're talking about is block party. You know, if if the street decides to close off this, you know, gets permission, close off the street for a block party, they might want a truck.
That would go to.
But that, again, I think that would go to special events and that would fall under under Michael.
No, but if you pulled up a truck for you're having a birthday party, pulled it in your driveway.
To Commissioner Newman, you asked if some of them would be approved or not. That's hard to say. I guess in the case of the two gas stations, we'd make a case for site circulation. It doesn't actually work. We don't have measurements. I mean, we have a drive aisle has to be 24 feet. I don't know if they violate that. They probably do. You know, the Ferndale Foods one probably doesn't violate anything, except if I really ran the parking number, are they supposed to have all those parking spaces?
Same with Urban Rest.
What's that?
Urban Rest probably doesn't violate either.
Urban Rest probably doesn't?
Yeah, because they've got a good amount of parking as well. But to the to your point.
Or in the drive.
If they, it depends, because they sometimes they put them in parking spots, sometimes they put them in the drive, sometimes they put them on the street. So.
It probably, most of them probably wouldn't meet the broad, like things like adequate circulation, you know, broad things, but specific things, you know, other than a drive aisle or a parking space, they probably meet.
Yeah.
But it's those, you know, you go out there and you feel like this doesn't make sense here.
From a planning commission standpoint, it would be waiving a certain capacity of parking, but making sure that there's egress is maintained or something like that.
Very good.
And I, and yeah, I think it's something that we should look at. But I also don't want to make it so there's a whole section of code that's deep that people have to, I held my fingers out about an inch deep to that.
For those listening.
For someone, yeah. Exciting thing going on. But I want to keep it relatively simple. Because especially since like it's if someone comes in, I don't want them to, oh, we don't, we don't take our food trucks to Ferndale because they, they, there's a mile of paperwork that we have to do to take, you take, get this taken care of. And so I think like for the very, very, for like very transitory ones, I don't, I think that ones that are constantly moving or like driving up to a office, office park, like at a place where I used to work, there used to occasionally be a food truck that would pull up there for the lunch hour and then pull away. And I don't really, I don't, I don't think that they really need a whole lot, but it's but for people that are parked there, I think that becomes a whole other issue because they've become an accessory, they've become a restaurant that's not really a restaurant. And, I mean, and codes exist for a reason, codes, and bathrooms are required for a reason to protect, not just to protect the workers, but to protect the health, safety and welfare of the residents. So people aren't, aren't using the hand sink as a bathroom or or anything like that. So I think that it's something that I think the restrooms at a minimum, I think, need to be addressed for longer term stays. But, but one, the, the ones that just kind of pull in, serve and pull away, I don't really know if that needs to be as regulated, but.
The ones that are there for just a day, they've got to just, they've got to have all the Oakland County approvals.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think that's really the issue. At least that's when we were going through the, the code and being asked to update it. Commissioner Rachel and I, Subakatani, is that how you say it? We realized that we were way over our head because there were, you're looking at a lot of sites that have been there for a year or more. And how do you not treat, how do you not treat them differently? All right, not treat them differently than a company that just comes in and builds a building and serves food. I, you know, for example, the barbecue place has been there since 2016. They're, they're like a, a brick and mortar building with wheels. But there's no, there's no oversight to make sure that the general public is, is seen to, so that there's restrooms. We've witnessed people urinating because there's no bathrooms at one of the locations. You know, the, the employee that works in the thing, there's no bathroom there and they're urinating between a couple of trucks. You can't operate that way. You know, we don't want that in Ferndale. How is garbage being handled? I, you know, if you're there for a day, again, I, I don't have any issue with someone being there for a day. But, you know, if you're there for a week or, you know, two months, a year, how are you handling garbage? You know, is there a set schedule? Are there dumpsters on site? You know, or are you taking it away every day in your car to throw it into someone else's dumpster?
Or is there an agreement with the property owner that has a bathroom and a dumpster for you to use?
Correct, yes. You know, they're, they're operating a, a business long term in the city. Again, I have no issue with the, you know, oh, I'm want to come for a weekend for, you know, some, something that's going on. I, you know, I want to come for a day or every, every day stop at a different location, you know, in the industrial area, you know, stay for a couple of hours. I don't have a problem with those vehicles. I have a problem with the ones that are there for three months, six months, a year, seven years.
How do you differentiate and track that, though? Like whose responsibility would that be? If you did have a truck, let's say that on Monday parked in one place and Tuesday parked in another to try to skirt the rule that against permanence?
And currently, there's no, there's nothing stopping a property owner from bringing a food truck.
Yeah. If someone is, if someone's moving around and has a particular route throughout the city and they park in different areas throughout the city, they're still operating as kind of a mobile vendor. They're not, they're not, they're not setting, setting down roots in a certain spot and, I mean, and not, and letting that site go to the birds and just.
Yeah.
Become overgrown and what.
They're operating as a mobile unit. I, you know, it's, it's mobile vending, but, you know, if you're parked there for months and you're coming in with your, you know, your F-150 and, and, you know, going to work that leave in the day.
Yeah, the problem is that we have to establish a threshold of when does it change over from mobile to semi-permanent to, and then what regulations we want to place on them. And so.
Yeah, and there's two different levels. Are you going to have patrons hanging out on site or not? Is it only grab and go? Because that also then makes sure now you've got an access to the restrooms for the public as well.
And how do we differentiate that? Like, how do we?
But it's, I mean, from a site plan review, if their goal is to have public be able to.
Seating.
Then you've got to have access for them, restrooms.
Yeah, it's, if, yeah, if you're putting up picnic tables and allowing people to stay for a period of time, to me, that's no longer mobile vending. It's not walk up, you know, grab a hot dog and, and walk away, eat in my car, drive away, something.
But I mean, is it, is it our goal in Ferndale to encourage these businesses to grow and move on to a brick and mortar or grow their companies or that kind of thing? So, so a certain period of time, I think, is a viable conversation that we want to have and support.
I think a time limit before having to go to, I think the, I don't want to say the limit, but a time threshold is, that makes sense to me, just to make sure that people either are providing the correct amenities or, or, or moving around.
Well, and, and Commissioner Moschelli and I chatted a couple of weeks ago and, you know, we talked about the different types, the, the one day, you know, I don't have any issue with the one day. Then you have, you know, four day, maybe someone wants to do a Thursday through Sunday. I suggested doing a two to seven day so that if, you know, if they want to do three days or five days, you know, be there, you know. And then there's like a renewal. Maybe I want to do every, you know, once a month or once every six weeks or something. You know, allow them to renew that license. But the minute that you're starting to go, you know, a month or six weeks, you know, ongoing, then it should be aligned with our seasonal patio time, which is March 15th to November 15th. You know, we do inspections for patios to make sure that they're, you know, up to code. I, I, I think we follow the same time and, and logic for food trucks if they want to be there for an extended period of time and they need to meet certain requirements, providing bathrooms, sanitation spaces, making sure that there's adequate parking, egress.
I think there's two different things that you're talking about. So like the timeframe of three months, you said, right? That, that was at their threshold, I said it should align with that. Did I hear you correctly?
The.
I think we were saying like six weeks max of the renewable.
Yeah.
Well, so I would say that the outdoor patio is for outdoor seating, which is a seasonal thing. Food vending, I don't think is necessarily seasonal unless there is seating that's provided. Because, I mean, we see food trucks that are, you know, year round and people wanting to visit food trucks year round, not necessarily seasonally. Again, seating being differently, because if that's part of their business structure is that, should we be providing that outs, like we're not allowing people to, restaurants to have vendor, what is it called?
Well, let's say they've got a.
Sidewalk Cafe.
Say we've got a patio season, but maybe they want to operate after that, then they can do the weekly. So like.
But I think what Councilman Polica was saying, that it should be aligned with the, the permitting process. I think if there's outdoor seating, why, how are we going to allow for those food vendors when we're not?
So I was just looking for, from a time period, you know, let's say that they only wanted to operate for four months or five months, that they would then fall into the, the March 15th to November 15th, you know, so maybe they just want to do the summer, you know? But they would fall into that category, that license. If they want to do all year long, then they fall into the, the annual.
Thank you.
So I like consistency. I mean, I really, I, I tend to agree with Greg about the idea of falling into the same line as the outdoor sidewalk requirements, just outside patios, just for consistency's sake. But for specifically about what timeline on how, how long you can have your permit for, whether it's an annual or two day or whatever, I fall back on how the current ordinance for valet licensing is. And we changed this not that long ago, a couple, just a couple of years ago, because we only allowed annual permits at one time. And then because of special events, not specifically like festivals, but when like Valentine Vodka has a special event at their location, they might want to have a food truck because they don't have a kitchen, but they also, if they're having a wedding at their, their location, they want to be able to have valet, but it's only for that one time. So we changed the ordinance. So the ordinance allows an annual license so that if you want to be in a specific location for a duration of the year, it expires December 31st of every year. So you have to renew within 30 days before the expiration to be renewed. But it also allows, and this is where it's changed, is, and this is where I think this is important and not make it complicated, because I don't think that it should matter to you as a body, whether or not the permit is for a day or two days or three weeks. Because even with the valet license, it allows the city through the policy, through, such as right now with the valet is through the city manager's office. And since I process it, basically it's me, that an applicant can apply for a temporary, but for a valet service that cannot exceed 30 days. So that's how it's defined. But through the applicant, and we do the same thing when it comes to parking space reservations, so that if you want, if you're having an event and you need to, you would like to reserve like six spaces, you can rent those in advance and then parking enforcement will secure those parking spaces. You're, you're paying for the service. But they're securing those spaces just for that temporary, that fit one day. And so that's all you get. So, and this is where I'm talking about consistency, is making sure that we're doing it in the same form or style that we're already doing with everything else, so that it's just a natural process, not a complicated where one is completely different from the other. So that for someone like me, it's like, I want to be consistent in knowing that each process is done a certain way so that if you're, if you're wanting to do an event that involves a food truck, this is the, this is the policy. If it has to do with reserving a parking space, this is the policy. If you're applying for valet service, this is the policy. There's some consistency to them all.
Oh, Michael, are you suggesting there's a one day, a 30 day and an annual?
No, I'm saying that it could be that a temporary license or an annual license. The temporary is determined by the city on whether it's a one day or a seven day, but it can't exceed 30 days. For example. But it gives the city the ability to do its duty and its job, because not every event, let's say that there's an event at the Rust Belt Market and it's for three days. They don't want a one day, obviously, if they're going to have a special event that might.
The temporary would allow flexibility.
Yeah. So you want to be able to have that. In fact, they didn't do it this year, but the Rust Belt Market did provide me an application to do a special event during the holiday season that would be for 21 days. And they wanted to close the alleyway behind them and have food trucks there. So it would fall under special events, but it's would be an unusual, because we never have in a special event that's that long. But we still have the ability through the city policy to have that ability, a flexibility to determine a length of time. And so like with this, we would still be able to have that length of time, but still say it cannot exceed a certain time. If it's a short term or a temporary license versus an annual, which could be, you know, January 1st to December 31st, or it could be like he's suggesting, and that is the out. or it could be like he's suggesting, and that is the outdoor service. No, that could be part of the thing too, is you can, such as what we, uh, are, what is it that we're doing? You, you can only apply like, you have a limit of like three times per year.
Okay. So it limits the number of applications.
Of applications, yeah. Uh, oh, that's right, uh, we're doing that with, um, uh, Nine Mile and Woodward Marquee. I'm, you're going to know now, you're not supposed to know yet, but we're, we're looking to get that
This is public.
That getting fixed. We're getting it repaired.
Yeah.
And, but if you want to
So similar process.
advertise on it, you can only do it a certain amount of times per year so that everybody has a chance to, that whether you're a nonprofit or a, a local business in Ferndale to rent that marquee.
Okay. All right, so I think, um, I think what you said about, you know, we don't necessarily have to concern ourselves with the temporary nature to the specifics because the city is implementing that. I think what we are concerned about is when it's crossing the threshold and like, what is it triggering? And I think that knowing how your process works helps us to identify, well, when can we, like, one, we want to let the public know for, and businesses so that they're aware of what's going on. But when are we going to start implementing these regulations on them when they're crossing a specific threshold? And like, how can we trigger that to make sure that then they go through the process so that we can identify the specific, um, regulations that we want to?
So it sounds like if they apply for an annual license, then that would potentially trigger planning commission review.
I think Michael, uh, gave a good example without doing so, but everybody gets a 30 day or a, you know, a temporary. And then the moment they go to renew it, it becomes a, it becomes something else, right? You can't apply twice.
Or you, or we let them apply, but no more than four times a year. Yeah, or, you know, so, cause then that would be more of like a summertime thing. That's not saying that there, that is still temporary, not a semi-permanent or permanent type of situation.
So if I understand what you're saying, so I could come in May and get a 30 day and then renew it for June and then renew it for July and renew it for August. But after the fourth time, then I would have to apply for a year long?
I threw four out.
Okay.
You're out for that year, that one year. So if you're going to do that, you might, you probably, based on whatever that fee might be, you might as well apply for a, a year.
Well, but that also triggers, if you're applying for a year, that also triggers a site plan and making sure that they have restrooms. But a temporary wouldn't, you know, if they're going to be there for a month, that wouldn't trigger that.
Right, right. But I would say that because of all the other, I'm, I'm sorry, um, all the other requirements that we might be asking to be able to have that, that maybe third days would be too long, especially when we're talking about sanitation.
The, the Oakland County Health Department does require that an employee restroom access plan is suspended. So there is that, there is that restroom component to that. I think maybe the only other thing that would maybe for the temporary one is if they want to have outdoor seating, that would probably trigger planning commission review.
Temporary, you don't get outdoor seating and you only get outdoor seating.
Or a city review, like they do with the patios.
Maybe, yeah.
Um, I've got a question that might be a little bit off track, but maybe not is, um, what, what is typically found as the agreement with the property owners? Is it a handshake agreement? Do they have some kind of a lease agreement? What's, have we asked or do we know what the?
That was one of my questions that I would want to ask the property owner.
With special events, for example, you have the green space right across the street from Mezcal. That's private property. Whenever a special event that requests approval to utilize a public space and they want to access that as well, we require them to get the property owner's permission in written, a written letter that's sent to me that says that they're approving that. And they agreed to also include them in their additional insurance or their liability insurance.
We sort of polled or has that been a question to some of the other ones that were visited? The business arrangement between the, whose property they're on and?
So currently there's nothing, but I have full confidence for almost all property owners. And if someone came on your property and you didn't want them, you just called the police or asked them to leave. But generally, what are they doing right now? I'm going to assume somewhere like probably just a handshake. You know, I pay $300 a month and I can park here. If the, if the property owner was smart, they'd probably require some lease with some insurance in case somebody gets hurt. But it's probably 50/50 on just a handshake or some kind of small lease. But as part of this, we can require it, obviously, is the applicant, the owner has to sign off on the application or at least keep providing or something.
It's also important to know that, uh, the Ferndale Fire Department does require, no matter whether you're just there for a day or whether you're there all year, that you have to have a fire code inspection. And it's not just for the suppression system. It's also to, for everything else that has to do with anything that's cooking. They require in a special event and they, they're frustrated because right now with all these different
They should in fire suppression.
With all these mobile trucks that are everywhere and like urban rest, because they don't know when they're coming in, who's coming in. And they're only there overnight and it's usually during the weekend. Fire, fire marshal doesn't know. And, but they should be getting an inspection. The inspection permit is valid for a year. But it's a challenge because we really don't know.
After hours.
Even with this, we're still going to have that challenge because somebody's going to have, you know, a food truck that's going to come in and do a service for them for a day. You know, and it could be at a block party, you know, or it could be just at a local business that's having some kind of event that we're not aware of. So, you know, it's always going to be a, a challenge, but at least we're getting a better control of what is. Cause it's more about public safety than it is about anything else.
And it is a requirement from Oakland County.
Yes.
Through the chair, uh, something that you, you pointed out, like for example with urban rest. If, let's say they have someone come in that wasn't previously certified by the fire department because it's good for a year. If someone were to identify a vehicle like that, there is a fine, is there not? I mean.
Yeah, they, uh, they could see, be, uh, told to cease and desist or
Yeah, but there's also a financial fine, I believe. Probably not jail, but I mean, probably something substantial, $500 or a thousand dollar fine.
I think it's 200, but I'm not, it's
Really?
Yeah, something like that.
That's nothing to, to, okay.
All right, are there any other things that we wanted to discuss prior to our next meeting in which we'll bring in?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Commissioner Hayes are brought up a good one for our next meeting. So I would say, what are, what are the things that we would want to know from the food truck vendors or property owners? Are there questions that we want to clarify?
Well, I, I, I think, um, like for each of them, what are their intentions long-term? Is their intentions to always be at that space? Or are they, you know, are they looking at this as a stepping stone and they're going to, you know, build a restaurant? And this is just the first, I mean, I, I don't know, you know?
So the question
Are they here this year and then next year they're going to be in some other city?
So the two questions, if, who do we want to invite? Do we want to invite only the food truck owners? Or do you want to invite the food truck owners in the surrounding neighborhood? You know, 100 feet, 200 feet, some kind of small thing, because they're in on it too.
I, I don't want to turn into pitchforks and torches. I, I think just the, the vendors first and then, and the property owners. And then maybe a future meeting when we've gathered all of this information, we could then invite neighbors to say, hey, you know, we understand that there's vendors near you, but I don't want to give an opportunity for residents and vendors to be arguing with one another. Because this resident, you know, found a paper cup and is just blown out of proportion.
Well, we would control it more, but I hear you. The other thing when doing, I've seen a lot, we did it at the town hall and a couple M dot things we've done is where you do it from your phone. You can just log in and people can vote versus having each food truck owner come up and talk about their specific issue. Cause they're going to be very, you know, very focused on them is to kind of decentralize it and just have questions where you can vote on your phone. You know, do you plan on staying long-term? Do you visit other cities? You know, do you feel like you have adequate space, you know?
How's the fire department process of getting?
Yeah, we could come up with general questions that I would say vote, vote now. And so that way it's not people becoming all about me, 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 but it's kind of averaging out.
Yeah, tell them to bring their cell phones so that they can vote.
So that's one way we can do it.
Sorry, through the chair, one other question, because I'm, I'm curious that food trucks have been
Someone's going to
pretty popular for years. How far have we looked for other, other places that have regulated this? I mean, I'm nationwide, you know, the great food truck race, they, they do them everywhere. They probably do them in most larger public areas, but I'm just wondering if we, um, gone very far in looking at other ways this is being addressed.
That would be, uh, Commissioner Moschelli and, uh, Councilor Polica.
Zero, zero.
Zero.
So when, when we first came up with the food truck ordinance back in like 2012 or 14, I researched, um, neighboring communities and communities across the nation for similar. Of course, that was quite a long time ago and that was when a lot of folks were just, um, wasn't like, or maybe it was even longer ago than that. I forget, I forget what year it was that we first created regulations, but it was
Was around that, yeah. It was, it was just before I came onto council.
Maybe, yeah. And so leading up to that, we did quite a bit of research at the DDA, um, through the Biz Dev Committee. 11, that's 12, yeah. And kind of across the nation, so it was kind of a new thing. So we did do quite a bit of research at that point. But I haven't looked at anything since. So here's some questions. I think we, if we ask questions such as like, where do you typically find the most success operating? What's your like customer model, like ordering at the truck, having seating? What are the times of day that are most profitable to you? Like more of like an information gathering of like their business model, I think will help us to identify versus like, would you like this or this? You know, more so, I think if we focus on data gathering.
And I know that at the time, what really triggered it was we started seeing mobile vendors come into downtown. And a number of business owners were getting concerned that all of a sudden we're just letting mobile vendors, you know, serve in front of their businesses. And, and that's kind of what triggered it. I don't think we have that kind of an issue now.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but we're going to have to end the conversation. We're actually going to have to, I think in the meeting, because we're going to lose quorum because it's 8:30. And as, um, stated, Krista or Commissioners Azar and Brayson do need to leave.
Yeah, I'd like to excuse myself from the meeting.
Just want to clarify, it is a $500 fine from the fire department.
I don't have anything, um, as everyone knows Kyle left. So if you can be a little bit patient with me as I get back in the group of current planning, but I think
We have like a new zoning ordinance.
New zoning.
Sounds so easy.
And then, um, do you have a date for the report to the city council on the planning commission annual report?
Do you have a date that it's going to go to city council? Not yet. We'll just go, have to go after I have the next planning commission meeting. Do you want to review it at the next one or you want to go straight to the city council?
We'll probably want to review it, make sure that everyone, um, is okay with our annual report and then we'll, it will go to city council.
All right, so we can carry it to the next planning commission and then go
Thank you, thank for the reminder, yeah. All right, well, with that, I will adjourn tonight's meeting at 8:34 PM. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I wasn't watching the clock. Have a good night.